Good evening. If we can, let's go ahead and get our city council meeting together tonight. Do we have anybody from the ministerial alliance here tonight? If not, Nathan, would you mind?
Be happy to. That with me. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this evening that we can come together. We thank you for this, the celebration of this past weekend where we celebrate our freedoms, and we come together and we don't take that for granted. We thank you for those who have sacrificed so much that we can continue to have those freedoms. I pray for this group here, that you give us your wisdom and discernment to navigate the decisions that are laid before us well. Let us honor you, let us honor those who have voted for us to make these decisions. I do pray for the families that have gone through so much loss in Texas with the flooding that has been going on. I pray for their safety and well-being and for comfort for those who have had so much loss. I pray for the safety of this town and that you be with us and walk with us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Chairman. If we could, let's do the national.
I think Jackson's supposed to do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda tonight, and we've got quite a few on there, but we've got council minutes and session minutes. Any councilmen have any comments or questions from that? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Chairman will make a motion.
Ballch will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All ayes. Thank you. All right. Below that is the mayor and council reports from all the commissions and the city departments. There's quite a few there, so I'm not going to go through them individually, but does anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts from any of the reports?
No, Mr. Mayor Protem, I don't have any.
I'm sorry. I don't know why I looked at you. Anybody else? All right. Nothing there. We'll move on to, we don't have any public hearings tonight. I think we've got Lauren Hill from SBA on her way, but I don't think she's quite here yet, so let's come on down and go to our first item of old business. Tom, would you come up, talk about the vacation of the portion of 11th Street on Powell Avenue, please?
Yeah. So this is the, this will be the second time hearing about this, and so I'm going to go kind of fast and just let me know if you have any questions, but this is a request by the Phelps County, Phelps Health Hospital to vacate a portion of 11th Street. So this would be the portion I got on the map, but it's the portion just basically to the west of this Asher Street Drive thing. And we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting, but basically the hospital is planning to do, in addition to the building, to relocate their entrance for the emergency room, and so the hospital's also purchased all these properties in this area now, with the last one being this, this house at the corner just recently. And so no other property owners are, have properties along the, on the street, so it doesn't need to be a public street anymore. So their request is to vacate that and to be replaced with a utilitiesment, because there are many utilities in the area. I've talked about this, this is the other vacations that have been done in the past as the hospitals acquired additional properties in the area, and then there's, they've built some private streets to kind of provide access to the area and their parking lots as time has gone on, so. This is what the street looks like, to be looking toward the west, toward the hospital. As I said, there's a lot of utilities in the thing, so it'd be replaced with a utilitiesment. Someday they may decide to have the utilities relocated and that sort of thing, but that's not the proposal at this time. This is the survey showing the area that we're talking about, and to summarize, there are some utilities in the area, so it needs to be retained. That's the one I meant to change. So the, this street is no longer needed to provide access to properties not owned by the applicant, and we didn't receive any objections. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. So any questions for me?
I think you did a great job with that last time. Tom, does anybody have any questions for Tom? If not, can we take a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Read it for me.
An ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of 11th Street generally located west of Powell Avenue.
Chairman will make a motion to approve.
Hon will second.
Lori, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
McNevin?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Rolups?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Bye-nice.
Thank you. The next one up is an ordinance entered into an agreement with Meyer Electric. Is Floyd, yeah, Floyd's here. Floyd, would you mind to come up and speak on this one, please?
Council approved the bid for Wilson Field Lighting Project at the last June 16 meeting, so this particular one, just a refresher for you, is going to be paid for a combination of Land Water Conservation Fund grant dollars and Prop P's 50/50. Project is set for completion by October 30th. Staff is requesting the final reading of the ordinance approving the contract with Meyer, which was the low bid. Questions?
Question. This is maybe kind of the ninth inning, so to speak, to bring this up. Who is visioned to use this? Is this going to be city league softball? Is this, I didn't know what size field this was. I didn't know if this was a specific age that we would more see using this, or this would just be a part of, is it the same sized softball field as all the other softball fields?
Pretty much so. Yeah. This one was initially constructed back when Ken Quanis was the director. They had started that process, and it was actually part of a plan to construct three additional fields, but the growth has not been there for three, so we decided this one, we got pretty far down the road because we had several memorial tournaments every year for Larry Wilson Field, and so really it kind of made sense to go ahead and finish this one out. So specifically to your question about who will use it, it will be used by our leagues primarily, but it will also give us a fifth field to utilize for the high school, which is using most of our fields now when they have their tournaments, and also give us another field location for S&amp;T intramurals, which also uses all our fields. So those will be the primary users. S&amp;T Intramural Baseball Club also uses our fields too, so this just gives us more flexibility in that, and particularly with scheduling, since this will also have this lighting.
Sure. And besides upkeep and maintenance, would we consider this close to being complete then for this field being done, or is there more phases to kind of finish?
Well, all of this, this grant, this Land Water Conservation Fund essentially will finish out this field. So after we do the lighting, the next step will be the scoreboards that we'll have to put in, scoreboard singular, and finish out the dugouts, because we had the ADA path already done, and we also have the scoreboard, their dugout paths also finished. So those are really the last two main steps. There'll be some additional field prep. We'll have to do some potentially laser leveling and at some point, like we've done with the others over time, an irrigation system, but by and large, by the time this grant is finished, the field will be pretty much done.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, Nathan, can we have a final reading?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Meyer Electric for the replacement of Wilson Field Lighting.
Bulch will make a motion.
Baron seconds.
Kind of point of clarity, did you say the replacement or the installation? This was an initial installation, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought he said replacement. I just wanted to clarify that that was.
It's what the ordinance says.
I did say replacement.
Yep.
It's not a, sorry. I just thought that the one specifically said replacement, the other one said that it was like an initial installation.
It would be more accurate to call this an installation rather than replacement.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. May not make a difference.
Good.
That's a great point. All right. So we've got a motion and a second on the installation.
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
McNevin?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Rolups?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bye-nice.
All right. Floyd, while you're up here, will you go ahead and hit the lighting?
Now we get the replacement.
There you go. Thank you.
So council approved the award for this, this project, also at the last meeting, and this is for the replacement system at Quanis' existing field that was impacted by the tornado on March 14th. It came through and knocked out a bank of our light, so this one will be paid for by insurance funds and also Prop P dollars. Staff is recommending final reading of the ordinance approving the contract with Quiglight, the low bidder.
Do we know how much will come out of Prop P versus how much insurance is covering?
I'm going to guess insurance would probably pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000-25,000 would be, so Prop P would pick up the balance. The interesting, nice thing about this one was the lighting system replacement came in considerably less than all the other bowl fields. Partly that's due because it shares lighting system with two of the adjacent fields, Bayless and Morgan, so that makes it somewhat less expensive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nathan, can we have a final reading, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Qualite Sports Lighting, Inc., for the replacement of Qantas Field Lighting.
We have a roll call vote, please?
Motion.
I'm sorry.
Bulch will make a motion.
Pace will second.
Now we got a motion and a second. Now can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dickens?
Yes.
Rolups?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
McNevin?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Bye-nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Floyd.
Thanks, Floyd.
Next, there's Darren there. Talk a little bit about the Pierce Asphalt, final reading.
So at the last meeting, council ordered the bid to Pierce Asphalt for Project 601, which is 2025 asphalt phase three. This phase includes work on portions of Fairburn Drive, Savannah Cork, Roseglade Road, an alley between, or parallel to Okinama Streets between 11th and 12th, and a new parking lot at the Green Acres Park off Southview. So staff is requesting the final reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor the contract with a low bidder of Pierce Asphalt LLC for $194,495.50.
Does anybody have any questions for Darren on that one?
Will that complete the parking lot off of Southview? So that'll be all the work that he's done there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nathan, can you read that?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Pierce Asphalt LLC.
Move to accept. Pace second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Reven?
Yes.
McNevin?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Rolups?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bye-nice.
Thank you very much. I believe I just saw Ms. Hill come in from the SBA. Come on up. Come on up to the mic there. There you go.
Where I stand.
So Ms. Hill's from the SBA regarding the disaster assistance relief?
Yes, yes. Thank you for having us, and again, apologize for running behind. I am Lauren Hill. I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration, and we are here to help those in your community who were impacted by the tornadoes that happened March 14th and 15th in the area. So Phelps County is one of the declared counties, so we have our SBA Disaster Loan Assistance Program available to those in your community that are renters, homeowners, and business owners or nonprofit owners. They can apply for our disaster loans via our website at www.sba.gov/disaster. And if you are a homeowner who was impacted, you can qualify for up to $500,000 in loans to help repair your property or rebuild. If you are a renter, you can qualify for up to $100,000 to replace any personal property. So we can't obviously provide loans for the structure itself, but say you, your automobile was ruined, or your furniture was ruined and you need to replace that, SBA provides loans for that. And for businesses and nonprofits, you can apply for up to $2 million to repair any personal property, as well as what we call economic injury. And so that is, say your property wasn't damaged, but you experienced a loss in revenue and are having challenges kind of keeping up your payroll payments or kind of your regular payments that you need to keep the business going. SBA provides loan assistance to kind of help keep paying those bills while you try to get back to business as usual. And our loan program is available at a low interest rate for all applicants, just to make it easier to build back and pay that loan back. I know you kind of think it's a loan. I don't really want to take out a loan, but it's something that you can use on top of any insurance money that you receive or any FEMA support that you, grants that you receive. The interest rate for homeowners and renters start at 2.813%. The interest rates for businesses start at 4%, and the interest rates for nonprofits start at 3.6%. So you have until July 22nd. Right now, that is the deadline to apply for any physical damage. For any economic injury, the deadline is a little bit later, just because sometimes it takes businesses a while to determine whether there was any economic injury due to a storm like that. So the deadline for that now is February 23rd of 2026, so you have a little bit more time. So I'm going to leave these with you all. We have fact sheets that pretty much detail what I talked about and then some, and then we also have our website on the back where you can go and apply, and a phone number where you can call if you have questions and kind of just want to talk to somebody or have someone talk you through it. So we would love your help in getting this information out to the community so that those impacted know that our loans are still available.
All right, Lauren. Thank you. I think it's awesome, because most people think about SBA and they think about business side. They don't know about the, the just normal cinnamon side, yeah, citizen side. I actually talked to some of your people at S&amp;T when they had the setup there, and then I talked to someone at the courthouse as well, just to go up and kind of see what's going on.
Yeah.
You guys have a great program.
Thank you. We are here to help. Yeah, we're definitely here to help. We definitely want to stay in touch with you all should anyone need us to kind of walk them through the process, or if you all have any webinars or anything like that, we're here to help. We also, I'll leave this stuff with you as well as my business card. I'll leave one with everybody, just in case you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Ms. Hill.
All right. From there, we'll go to new business. John, I'll ask you to talk to this next one here.
Yeah. It's kind of an unusual circumstance, but we're in the process, of course, of looking at the next city administrator and this issue of a potential conflict of the severance package surfaced, and so I wanted to bring to your attention the current situation, and there's a fairly easy remedy to this. So just to put it in perspective, my existing contract that I have with the city, which of course isn't affected by a severance pay because I'm retiring in November, but had there been involuntary separation where the council just for whatever reasons felt it was time for a change, that would trigger a severance package. And in the contract I have, it was a six-month severance package. Our old city code, section 2-168, spelled out a 60-day package, and so severance. And so there was always this conflict. I was never worried about it over the last 28 years, but as we look at moving forward, we want to certainly make sure that that conflict doesn't exist. So what's proposed in there is an amendment to that section. You can find this on Roman numeral 6A2 in your council packets. We're just adding the language to that section of city code that still spells out that there's a two-month calendar, two calendar months for severance unless otherwise provided for by a separate employment contract. So that's the additional language that's being proposed, and we're asking for a first reading tonight, and we'll bring this back in two weeks for a final reading. If you have any questions about that.
So basically, we're taking your agreement that you had 20, how many years ago?
Eight.
28 years ago, and we're fixing the one that was before that, the ordinance that was actually before that, that was even older to try to get it up to date.
Yep.
Yep. Any questions?
Just to be clear, the amendment is the red line text?
Yes.
Okay. So it's building in variation based on the contract made with the employee, essentially?
Yep.
Okay.
And specifically, this only addresses the city administrator position.
Right, right, right. Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Nathan, can we have a first reading, please?
An ordinance amending section 2-168 of the Rolla City Code and enacting a new section 2-168 pertaining to the removal of the city administrator.
All right, Darren, I think I've got you back next on the Whisper ISP's lease agreement on that one, please.
So staff received a request from Whisper Internet to lease space on our water tower at the Rolla National Airport. We currently lease space to some other companies now that do a similar thing. So Whisper Internet provides wireless internet to rural areas. We did negotiate a lease, and that's included in your packet. Key terms are, it's a five-year lease. At the end of that five years, the other will have to renegotiate, will have to remove their equipment. They can't interfere with any other. Let's see, we have on the tower, lease rate is $335 a month with an annual 3% increase, and they will provide insurance, namely the city is additional insured. Nathan has reviewed this document and found no problems with it. So staff is requesting a first reading of ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the lease agreement with Whisper Internet.
Darren, one thing I want to ask, does this, does this do anything or have any effects with the solar agreement that we're, where the pieces on the solar side we're working on?
No. The water tower is way up close to the highway there, wouldn't be within the lease area of the proposed solar lease, yeah.
Thank you.
I might even add that we, years ago, had two providers on the water tower, and one of them just went out of business and they removed their appliances. So adding a second one out there was done several years ago and was, didn't prove to provide any problems with the transmission.
Lots of water towers. You'll see, if you drive around, you have five or six.
Yeah. All around.
Darren, you'd mentioned after five years, we had the option to renegotiate the contract. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
But I also read, I think it said that they have the option of renewing up to three more sets of five years. Can we renegotiate in between each of those, or if they renew it, can we not change our lease?
Yeah. So we would have to give them notice, 120 days notice, that we're not going to be renewing it, and use that to renegotiate.
So after the initial five, we could give that notice and then renegotiate, even though it says that they have the option for renewal? Okay.
Yeah. But we have to consent to that.
We have to consent to that, too.
It's automatic if we say nothing.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, how did we come up with that number of $335 a month?
That's what we're charging the other company that's leasing space on the tower.
Okay. Thank you.
Nathan, would you read the first reading?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Whisper ISP LLC.
Thank you, Darren. John, you want to talk a little bit about the Highlands Community Agreement?
Yeah. This is a little bit of a piggyback onto what we did with the CID with the Forum Plaza. It's an unusual requirement of state statute that the autonomous political subdivision of the state of Missouri, called the Highlands Community Improvement District, which the council helped form, has to submit their budget to the city for review. There's no action required by the city council. There's no direction from the statutes that the council would take any action, but it's a way of kind of bringing back to council the formation of that particular district. In this case, this is just getting off the grounds, this is, of course, for the Highlands Housing Project going off of Highway 72, so there's actually a budget proposed in here for 2024, '25, and another one for '25, '26. That's the one that they're really preparing for. Both of them, they don't anticipate imposing their assessments, 500, 600, 700, 800 hours for annually, once the project is built and the improvements are there. So the two budgets that we've got, both for this year and for next, have zero economic impact. Nevertheless, the statute doesn't say you don't have to do the budget review if it's zero, so that's why we're submitting that for council. But if you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to take it back to the CID. It is a five-member board. The mayor sits as one of the five members. The other four represent the development group doing that project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about their submitted.
And will this be done each year that they have to submit it, is what you were saying? Okay.
I included the resolution. That's not a resolution for our action. That's the resolution the CID took in adopting the budgets, then forwarded on to the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, guys? All right. We'll move on to, back to Darren, motion to award a bid and ordinance for Pierce Asphalt. I got you hustling tonight, Darren.
That's all right. So staff did open bids for 2025 asphalt phase four. Low bid was Pierce Asphalt LLC for $199,819.40. This would make all the phases of asphalt, the budgets for those come in slightly under the budget appropriation amount. We'd be doing work on Green Tree, Iowa Street, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, and 14th Streets. So staff is requesting a motion toward the bid and the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor in the contract with Pierce Asphalt for $199,819.40. Is there any questions?
I have a citizen reach out asking about the road on Green Tree, which is pretty chewed up at this point. Are they redoing all of Green Tree? Do you know?
It should be in your packet.
Right, the map.
Map.
I wasn't sure if that was on there.
The answer is yes, we're doing all of Green Tree.
I don't think I saw that one on there.
So if you recall, council ordered a bid to redo the, do a portion in front of the fire station and concrete.
Yes.
So as soon as that part of the project's done, then the asphalt, we'll do, we'll do the rest of it.
Now, I know we've used Pierce Asphalt a lot. This NB West, have we used them before?
We have a contract with them right now.
Okay. The only reason I ask, and I've never seen a bid come in that close. There's a $106 spread between the first and the second bidder. You know, I'm fine going with Pierce, we've used them a lot, but if we had a preference of one that does, but you know, definitely better work with it being that close, but I didn't know if, from your perspective, there was one that, you know, that was more recommended to go with.
I would tell you, all three of those companies are very reputable and would not have any problems awarding to any of the three.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Darren? If not, can we make a motion?
Chairman will make a motion to approve Pierce Asphalt.
Bulch will second.
Motion and second. Motion and second. Can we have a roll call vote, please? No. Voice of all. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Now we'll do a first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Pierce Asphalt LLC.
All right, as we go through the agenda, now is our city citizens communication section. Does anybody have any citizens that would like to? Come on up.
All right, I'm just here again about my sewage issue. And I thank you for your prompt letter to us still denying responsibility. Couple of things, how did you come to the conclusion of that?
It was done in closed session. I'll have to defer to legal for any comment.
This is really more time for you to make comments than question the.
Oh, okay. So I'm still confused because even though it was not taken responsibility and actually says that the backups are a very rare occurrence in the city of Rolla, which if you drive around Rolla, you'll see plumbers and all this stuff all the time. And a lot of people have reached out to me since I'm going through this because I make a lot of public posts about it. And they've, you know, see me at Lowe's or they Facebook message me. So it is a common occurrence. I don't know how you're saying it's not. But also the water line isn't really the issue anymore. It happened, it was clogged, there was pictures, we all know that. The issue is that the responsibility and the authorization was given. Aaron Pace was in the basement with the superintendent when that, when that took place. I'm not sure if that was brought up, but he was there. So that's where we're at. I, I could have had anybody else do this. My dad would have done it for a 12-pack and a cheeseburger. I wouldn't owe him $52,000. But I'm out that and I have an incomplete basement. So this is my issue still. So I just don't know what else I need to do. We still in closed? Okay. Anything else? Yeah, who do we talk to about? Like who do I ask why it was, who came to this conclusion is what I need to know.
You could talk to our insurer.
We tried. They've said that there was no appeal process, which is not true. There's an appeal process with every insurance company.
And you should follow that.
Okay, all right. Super helpful again.
Is there any other citizen communication tonight? City council comments?
I would like to make a announcement. It's already out there. We have a Kid Safety Day flyer out there. It's on social media, printed flyers somewhere. July 19th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Lions Club. So come on out.
I think Chief Fagan has something he would like to.
Come on up, chief, please.
I just wanted to talk to the new council members and say that we are trying to revisit our neighborhood watch programs. So if your area wants to participate in neighborhood watch, you just need to reach out to our police department. We have packets that we can give you and we have Bruce Stallworth, one of my sergeants, who is, all he does is public relations. He can meet with you and meet with all the members and establish a nice neighborhood watch. So if it's something that you think you might want to do, just either send me an email or reach out to our police department and we'll hook you up with Bruce and get you going, okay?
Thank you, chief.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Any other council comments? All right, comments for the good of the order. Our next meeting, Nathan, double check me here, July 21st?
That's correct.
There we go, all right. And John, a little bit on that rezoning withdrawal?
You might remember two meetings ago, I think it was, maybe it was last meeting. We were setting aside a rezoning request on Lions Club Drive so that P&amp;Z could take further consideration. And the applicant then went through their application at this time, so.
So it won't even go back to plans?
It didn't go back to P&amp;Z. It won't come back to the council if they do revisit that. The whole thing, we'll have to start the process over again.
Good to know.
So no further actions needed, right?
I just have one minor thing. Every September, there's an MML conference in the, I want to say it's shortly after. It, it conflicts normally with one of our city council meetings. We always end up having to shift the schedule around. We always do it at the last minute. Just wanted to put it out there in front of everybody to be thinking about that. Looking forward to your calendars in September as to when we could shift meetings to. Just wanted to get it out there before it's the last minute, like, aha, gotcha.
Yeah, for sure, if you're interested. Because I know that Nathan's expressed interest and I'm scheduled to go. So in that case, we wouldn't change the date. But if we find that three or four or five of the council members want to go, then we do need to find an alternate date or make a commitment to drive back on Monday night, which is possible. We've done that before, but it's not easy to do, Nathan saying no. So it's clearly up to you all to decide. But you know, we need, do need to make registrations. We need to get hotel accommodations. So let us know as soon as possible if you think you're interested in doing that and then we'll make a decision on the timing of that council meeting.
Okay.
I believe it's the second council meeting in September. The third week of September is the conference. Usually runs Sunday through Wednesday.
Thank you. All right, if we don't have anything else, because we have a motion to go into closed session.
Chairman will make a motion to go into closed session.
Baron, seconds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, it was a roll call, isn't it?
Is that a roll call?
Yeah.
Lori, I'm sorry.
Uh, no.[1776.76]